I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have a roll call, please.
Belsley.
Here.
Dobbs.
Here.
Herr.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Kaufman.
Here.
Newhouse.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Let's do the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, limited to God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no public hearings scheduled. No special reports. Is there anyone here who would like to make a comment? Sir.
Hi, I'm Andy Saxma, 201 North Missouri in Morton here. I'd just like to share a couple of thoughts about the upcoming decision on the gambling, the video gambling. You know, I think if we decide for gambling, I think we're taking a risk with potentially encouraging addictions or starting new addictions that may not already exist. You know, we all have to have self-control in our decisions, but nevertheless, we're taking that risk. I think we might be taking the risk of inviting crime into Morton. I don't know how obvious crime is from gambling necessarily, but you know, I don't know if it comes from maybe feeding the habit or it comes from maybe the administration of gambling, but we're taking that risk. As a fundraiser, we take the risk of maybe fundraising on the backs of the people that can maybe least afford it. Bringing video gambling into a bar is mixing alcohol with games, so that it's a risk of maybe bringing out the worst qualities of both. I think it changes the, I think it takes the risk, makes the risk of changing the atmosphere of a bar. I myself attend a bar occasionally and usually it's a lot of camaraderie and cheer that goes on. I don't know that a video gaming machine would actually help that very much. It takes the risk of maybe letting a full-scale or larger-scale gambling into Morton in the future. I've given a lot of thought over the past couple of weeks and I just can't find any redeeming qualities in video gambling. I think the decisions we make reflect our character as a town and we've built lots of good, solid Bible teaching churches. We've built good, solid schools. We keep our billboards clean. I don't even think we have any billboards. I don't know how that came to be, but I think that's great too about Morton. I don't understand all the regulations that go into giving us this opportunity to make this decision, but I'm thankful that we have the decision to make. And I think it's a, I don't think it's a choice of making it illegal for Morton. I think it's a, because you can always just go over to Peoria and gamble if you want to. I think it's making a character decision for Morton. And I wanted to make one second comment. Last meeting in the minutes, Mr. Ted Witzig spoke and he cited the particular addictiveness of video gambling and that wasn't brought up in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a comment? Would anyone like, in the audience, like to pull something from the consent agenda? The consent agenda includes the minutes from our August 5th meeting, some bills and the resolution. Would any of the trustees like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I would. Letter D. Resolution number 08-13.
Okay. Could I have a motion to-
Your Honor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you over there.
No, that's okay. The point that he just brought up in regard to the approval of the minutes, I'm wondering if we could amend the minutes to add that comment to Mr. Witzig's. Stated his objection to the allowance of video gambling and noted it's highly, that it is a highly addictive form of gambling, which he did.
Do you want to make a motion to do that?
I mean, do we need to pull that off to-
Well, then the board's going to have to approve the change in the minutes.
Sure, okay, so let's pull off the approval of the minutes then, please.
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve what's left of the consent agenda?
There's nothing left.
The bills.
The bills.
The bills.
I'll pay the bills.
Second.
Second.
All of us in favor? Or do we have to read the roll call?
I'll call. Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Trustee Belsley, you pulled one first one. Let's talk about yours.
Yes, this is resolution number 08-13, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Morton School District 709. And actually, I pulled it for explanation purposes, but I'm actually going to look to Chief Hilliard to provide some background, a little bit on this, just for information for the community. This is something that he's been closely involved with and working with the school district on, and so I've just asked him to share a few comments on that resolution tonight.
Thank you. We've been working on this with the school district for the better part of this calendar year. We've been providing security services for the high school for extracurricular events since the 1970s. But as we've been looking at this over the last year, we're finding out that we've done this without any agreement between the two governmental bodies. We're trying to clear that up. It gives us a little bit more control over how we fill that and protects the village as well as the school district itself. And we're voting on the resolution of this this evening. The school district has it on their agenda for tomorrow's meeting. The passage of this by both bodies will be right before the events start with red-white night on this Friday.
Thanks, Greg.
We don't have a motion, do we?
No.
Could I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second by Dobbs. Would any of the other trustees like to weigh in on this?
Call roll. Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Trustee Herman, you want to amend the minutes?
Certainly, at the request of Andy. Is it Saxma? Okay. And I agree with his suggestion. I'd like to have the minutes of the August 15th meeting amended to mention that Mr. Witzig did mention that video gambling is a highly addictive form of gambling.
Second. Please wait. Mentioned that video gambling is a- Is a what?
Highly addictive.
Highly addictive form of gambling.
He talked about all the neural pathways, but I don't know if you want that in your minutes, but-
I'll put whatever you want in the minutes.
They can watch the video.
Could you reread that so everybody knows exactly what they're voting on?
The minutes will be adjusted to reflect the fact that Mr. Witzig mentioned that video gambling is a highly addictive form-
Of gambling.
We have a motion by Mrs. Herman and a second by Mr. Kaufman.
For purpose of clarification, just to make sure I understand, the board understands, this would be, do I understand your motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Yes, yes, sir.
So they don't have to come back next time?
Yes, sir.
As amended.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
For Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Under Village President, I have only one thing, and that is I want to remind everybody that we will not be meeting on Monday, September the 2nd. We will be meeting on the 3rd because of Labor Day. So we will meet on Tuesday at 7:00 on that day. Just a reminder. Village Clerk.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village Administrator.
Tonight, I'm asking for approval to transfer $77,000 from the general fund to the capital projects fund to fund infrastructure projects that we're currently working on at this time.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Would anyone like to discuss this?
Call it.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yeah.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
The second item on my list is I'm asking for approval to approve, approval for ordinance number 13-12, an ordinance authorizing borrowing from Heartland Bank. This is in regards to our fire station loan. Heartland Bank came to me saying that they could offer a lower interest rate. It's about, or else, 2.75%. It will save us $16,000 and we will have the same payoff, which will be 47 months from now. We did go to MCB about a year ago and asked them to give us their lowest rate and they just didn't beat what we're getting from Heartland Bank, what we're being offered.
So moved.
Second.
Sam, second. Any discussion?
Just one observation, Your Honor. Whenever we do these things, obviously, none of us is going to vote against something that's good for the taxpayer and a reduction in interest rates is good for the taxpayer. We have some wonderful banks in Morton who are strong partners with the community and everybody needs to get an equal chance. That's sometimes a difficult balancing act and I have no argument with the arrangement, but I guess my one, my counsel to the banks would be, make sure you're in the game with us and counsel to ourselves is make sure that, to the extent we can, that everybody gets a fair shake at village business.
The Administrator and I have talked about this before and I think she's gone way out of her way to make sure everybody gets a look at this. And I think it's really, we're just going to casually vote for this, but it's really interesting to get a reduction in rates when interest rates are in fact climbing, so my hat's off to your efforts. I think all the community has to be aware that we have a very professional treasurer and they better, better be talking to her if they want to be business with us.
Yeah, and my comments weren't, in no way meant to reflect on the treasurer.
Motion.
I'm in the fan club.
It might also be nice to note that in less than four years, that new fire station's paid for.
Do we have a motion for this?
Yes, we have a motion and a second.
Let's call it.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Chief of Police. Corporate Counsel. Director of Fire and Emergency.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Public Works.
I have two items tonight, Your Honor. First one in your packets is the Public Works recap for the month of July. And number two, I'd like to ask for permission to request bids for the East Cortland, North Morton Avenue Improvement Project.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Anyone like to discuss or a little more clarification? They're being done, call it.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Anything else?
Oh, that's it, that's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Planning and zoning is absent. Trustee, Newhouse, did you want to fill in for planning and zoning?
I think there are no issues for planning and zoning tonight. I believe there will be the next time.
Trustee Belsley.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Dobbs.
Nothing tonight.
Trustee Herr.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Herman.
Thank you, Your Honor. One resolution, number 07-13 you have in front of you. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of a service agreement with the lowest responsible bidder for the supply of electricity for residential and small commercial retail customers who do not opt out of such a program. In other words, our electric aggregation program. Coming up in May of 2014, the first term will begin to expire of some of the first households that were part of the municipal aggregation program, which includes about 400,000 households in the central Illinois area. Our consultant in this regard is Good Energy and based on the current rates and their forecast, they believe that they are going to probably want to go out to bid that load that will expire in May 2014. They want to be ready to go out to bid in late September, early October because the market is looking like a lot of suppliers are short of their goals for this year and they may be, we may be able to get an excellent rate. So what this resolution does is just basically grant us the opportunity to, to give them the opportunity to bid when they see it to be the most appropriate. And that will give them the most flexibility. So we just need to, they suggest that we get this in place. I had Wendy check with Peoria, East Peoria, Pekin and Peoria County, and their staffs are all recommending that they continue with Good Energy as the consultant, as we have been, and just carry on. So I feel pretty comfortable with this, although they have, because of our meeting schedule, Peoria won't be voting on this till like next week. But I would like to do a slight amendment to the resolution. And in section one, I'd like for it to say the president or president pro tem is authorized to execute, because last time it just so happened that it was Wendy and I that went over to do this. It could be either of us. The decision basically has to be made quite quickly because the bids expire, you know, they're maybe just good for like 24 hours or something. And then also in that paragraph, I'd like for it to read village clerk or village administrator is authorized to attest, because like Wendy or Joe may have to attest quite quickly to this. And that just leaves the door open to who's ever available that day or when this needs to be made. There's no change to our plan of governance at this time. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer it, but this just authorizes our consultant to bid at the, what they believe is the most optimum time. Any questions? I move approval.
Second, Your Honor. Any discussion?
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
That's all I have tonight, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Kaufman.
Nothing, except I see in the treasurer's notes here that we qualified again for our $22,500 grant for the waste disposal program landscape. So that'll be the 17th year we've got that grant.
Great.
Because of the amount of recycling that Village Morton does. If we continue to do such a good job of recycling, Tazewell County is more apt to give that to us, just a note.
Job well done, citizens. Because that program has cost them from $22,000 all the way up to $80,000. And now we've gotten it back down to about $30,000, $35,000. So we still pay about $13,000 to $15,000 in that bill. So it's very important that the citizens do it so we get that $22,500 grant.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Newhouse.
Your Honor, previous meeting, we agreed that I would seek to bring a proposal to the trustees' board for action on the plaza that would meet the objections of some people who had concerns and at the same time fulfill the objectives that had been set for it over the past couple of years by all of the citizens who have participated. Someone at the August 1st meeting stood up, I don't remember who it was, it might have been more than one person, but the strong point was made that if this is going to get done, it has to be based on compromise. And this plan, and I am proposing tonight, does represent compromise, a compromise on everyone's part, and it represents no liability to the village with one exception, which I will explain, unless and until the private fundraising is executed that would allow the plaza to proceed. Just quickly, I want to comment on the compromise. I said everybody gave something related to the size of the plaza, the location of the plaza, features, and the cost of the plaza. Cost reduction measures include, some of these we've talked about before and some of them are new, but reduced requirement for fill material, took cost out, combining the mechanical building with the restroom facilities in a single building, a change in the water feature, elimination of the staging area, sometimes called pavilion or given other names, but basically a staging area in the plaza, and now a substantially smaller size, which probably will result in some further reduced cost. And I will go through the provisions quickly, but in the event there are questions, I've asked Bruce Brown to be here. He's been the principal designer and represents Farnsworth and has been both a volunteer contributor to the process and representing the professional services as his company. And Mr. Loudermilk, who has been directly involved, is in a position to comment on some of the engineering and design criteria. Essentially, this plan, which is in your packet, provides for the following. $1 million from the business district tax and not to exceed $1 million. And incidentally, there's about $700,000 in that fund existing at present, so we're not talking about using money that isn't there. It is contingent upon 80% fundraising for the private sector of funding estimated at another $1 million, and 80% is kind of a standard figure for these kinds of fundraising objectives. I said there was an exception, and the exception is a $17,000 provision for cash available to be paid against the million dollars, the village's million dollars, to allow for planning, engineering, final design work that will bring the construction and the configuration with the existing site on Main Street, the green space that's there now. So it's based on the existing plaza site with no provision for acquiring additional property or closing Washington Street. And it requires that a provision for maintenance costs and a plan for doing so be included with a design that will come back for final approval, as has always been the case, subject to final approval by the village board. There's some further potential for volunteered services and materials that may play into the cost later. We won't know that for a while yet. And the Economic Development Council, the Morton Community Foundation, and the veterans organizations will take the responsibility for the private fundraising. So with that and with the ordinance as written, I move approval.
Second, Your Honor.
Your Honor. Could I ask-
Randy.
-to have the ordinance read publicly, since we, or at least some of us, received it for the first time on Friday, and I don't believe the public has had a chance to view it. It's not been published yet and I think it'd be important for the citizens to have a public reading of the ordinance.
You got a copy?
Yeah, and I think last time we did this, I might have said the same thing. We don't always observe first reading, so by doing a first reading, that doesn't table any action on this. This is just an informative step. And unless the president has any objection, I'd go ahead and read the ordinance. And I have a copy that was with the board pack, which I think is the most up-to-date copy. Text, the ordinance reads as follows. This is ordinance number 13-11, an ordinance authorizing plan for development of downtown plaza. Whereas the Board of Trustees previously held a public meeting to gather input from the citizens regarding the development of a plaza, and whereas the Board of Trustees has for the past two to three years obtained and reviewed various matters pertaining to the development of a plaza and is now prepared to authorize a plan. Now therefore, be it ordained by the president and Board of Trustees of the Village of Morton, Tazewell County, Illinois as follows. One, that the spending of a sum not to exceed $1 million from the business district tax is authorized for the development of the plaza, subject to the provisions of paragraph two. Two, the public funds cannot be spent except for those set forth in paragraph three until such time as 80% of one half of the project cost is raised by other sources, such as citizen contributions, veterans organizations, the Morton Economic Development Council, and the Morton Community Foundation. Project cost shall be that amount as determined by the final plan as approved by the Board of Trustees, subject to a cap of $2 million. The total project cost does not include any funds previously spent before the adoption of this ordinance. Three, the sum of $17,000 is authorized to be spent from the business district tax funds for the purpose of interim design and engineering costs. This will be part of the $1 million otherwise authorized. Four, the Downtown Development Committee shall submit a final plan and estimated maintenance cost to the Board of Trustees for approval. If the plan is not approved, the authorization of the expenditure of $1 million will be revoked. Five, the site to be used is a property previously acquired by the village on South Main Street. Be it ordained that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage, approval, and publication as may be required by law.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to speak to this ordinance?
I have one, just one comment I would like to make, and I mentioned this to trustee Newhouse earlier. I'd like to see the final plan when it's submitted. I'd like to see line items for each feature and the cost, so when it comes back for approval, we can eliminate or do whatever we want before we approve it and adjust the cost that way if it is so desired by the board.
Randy.
Yes, I have a couple of comments. I appreciate what trustee Newhouse shared, and I think giving a little more information on what the proposed plan might consist of, I would really like to see that more formalized, I guess, sort of like what Tom just shared, not only a line item budget maybe to show us what the proposed cost of each feature is, but what the replacement or maintenance cost of that as well. This is something I've, you know, mentioned early on, is that's an important part of our consideration. I think we seem to focus on just the initial cost of the improvements, and this is something that hopefully the community will have for a long time, and I think we'd be remiss if we didn't take into account the maintenance and replacement costs. So I would like to see that as well coming forth. And then that, Steve, you answered part of my question, I guess, verbally, is my, with $2 million budget, what does that consist of? We are setting a limit for the expenditure, but we really don't know what's going to be in that yet. And I guess I'd like to flip that around a little bit. In order to formalize the budget, I'd like to see what that is made up, rather than just open it up to $2 million of expenditures. What I see happening potentially is we authorize this, and you might imagine where the final price is going to come in at, right? It may be close to $2 million. And that's going to be a plan that we're going to be voting up or down on? Are, is there some other options, some variations along the way to show some further compromise and input from the citizens that we heard of just, you know, the first of this month? I would like to see that. So when we establish a $2 million budget right now, other than what you just shared, we don't have any of that in the resolution. I would like to see some more substance to that, listing what those features are, what it would consist of. I don't know if that's something we can do tonight. I don't see that. What I'd really see ideally being is for us to hold this over, have this be a second, a first reading, and hold it over so the public can understand what's being proposed and weigh in on it. This is a common practice we've done for a long time, just ordinances I've been involved with this past year. A noise ordinance and revisions to motorcycle usage in residential districts. They're police ordinances, but we held them over for a second reading just for the sake of letting the public be aware of what- of letting the public be aware of what policy decisions we're making and to weigh in on that if they so choose. So I think just with the significance of this issue and this project, I'd really like to see us hold this over for a second reading and let the public also see what we're proposing. And I don't know, Pat, if that's procedurally, if that's right, or you've got a motion on the floor, I guess we have to act, but can I ask for a consideration of that motion to have this be a first reading?
If the people who moved in second and choose to amend their motion, they can. With the motion being on the floor and seconded, that is, unless they choose to amend it, would be called for a vote. And if that did not pass, you could then move to table it, but short of a decision by the person who moved and then if they're seconded, the motion stands unless they choose to amend.
I guess I just look at this as, well, we don't have to look very far to see a great example of a community project, and that's the Birchwood Park Arts Pavilion, Idlewood, excuse me, Idlewood Arts Pavilion. That's a wonderful project unfolding right now. It's under construction. Most of us have seen it, enjoyed some of the concerts there, at least through the, while the construction's going on, at least know what's taking place. But if you look at what transpired to get it where it's at now, and what we'll have to enjoy as a community for years to come, is a coming together of many different entities. Private not-for-profit organizations, a public body, the park district, citizens that have made monetary contributions, businesses that have donated materials, and contractors that have provided reduced rates or donated labor and material as well. And it came together not just overnight, but actually the first run of this, if I recall, and I've talked to a number of those that have been involved with this effort, the price came in much higher than what they're looking at now. And actually, it's roughly a quarter of a million dollars less what they're building now, but that's because of the give and take and the compromise and the contributions of many entities and individuals involved. But the main thing that struck me is that it just didn't happen overnight either. From idea to construction, you're looking at roughly six years. And I've talked to those that have been involved in that effort. And I'm looking at that, and I'm thinking that's a great example of working together as a community, community enterprise and spirit, and compromise again. And I see what a great, long-term, lasting public feature that's going to be for all of us to enjoy. And I look at this here tonight, what we're considering, and I see that just the first of this month, literally August 1st, we had a couple hundred people in this room that we've asked to come and give us input and feedback on this project. And it was great just to hear those comments, very diverse. Many of them I heard echoing sentiments of compromise, and let's work together and maybe take it a little slower and see what unfolds there as we move forward. But regardless of what final decision comes from that, I think the point was is let's work at this and slow it down. And here we are, 18 days later, and we're ready to vote on an ordinance authorizing $2 million to spend on a plan that we don't know exactly tonight what's going to go in it. So I guess I would ask for my colleagues on the board to consider the opportunity to slow this down a little bit, give the citizens a chance to really understand what we're proposing here, especially with the expenditures involved. And I'd ask for, I guess, ask consideration for this to be a first reading.
Trustee Newhouse, I think the question's directed to you.
I've informed my colleagues that we have been working on this now for, I think, something on the order of three years in general and two years in specific. The discussion, the plan, various aspects of the plan have been in front of this board many times. And in fact, the event which kind of precipitated the requirement to go back and take a second look was the presentation of the plan in February. So I think it's had extensive discussion. What I heard from the August 1st meeting from many people was not take longer, but rather make a decision. And so I regret to say that I cannot agree to amend the proposal. I would argue that while we're talking rather glibly about $2 million, we need to go back to my earlier discussion. First off, we're not talking about $2 million of village money. We're talking about $1 million committed by this board, and none of that money, none of it pays out unless and until the private funding goal is met and the plan is approved along with the maintenance, estimated maintenance cost and plan for doing it. So essentially, nothing, no village money can be spent until all of these things are put in place. And we need a funding vehicle in order for the private funding to take place. They can't raise the money without a budget and a plan. So I think, all due respect, I believe trustee Belsley's objections have been met in this plan, and I will ask for the vote, Your Honor.
Anyone else like to comment?
Yes, I would like to comment.
Trustee Airman?
Many of my comments have been made, but I, since I wrote them down, I'd like to say them. Steve, I appreciate your willingness to bring something back to us. And you did answer a lot of the questions that I had written down in regard to Washington Street and, you know, what compromises have been made so far, et cetera. However, before I could support this ordinance, I too really would like, as trustee Dobbs suggested, sooner rather than later, like now, before we vote on this, I would like to see a site plan with the proposed features and line item of their estimated cost for construction and maintenance. So that we know if we set a cap and it's not even the features that we, you know, were suggested, I mean, I just would like to see before is basically a blank check. Now, I know that we've heard the money's there and it can be fundraised, and I totally appreciate that there are donors ready and willing to come forward. But the money may be there, but we still, it's our responsibility to make sure that the features that the citizens want and will use are what's in that plan. And I just appreciate so much the many, many people that came to that August 1st meeting. And what I heard and sensed from them is that there were very few people that were just dead set against a plaza project, if you will. But there were many people who wanted it to be, who wanted to have input and be part of the process, and they were, and it was fantastic. And they had some great ideas. And Craig Barley, for instance, commented that he really felt like we should begin with green space, trees, landscaping, restrooms, and assess, his comments were similar to what I mentioned that night, and then assess how the space is being used. Is this, before we fill up a space with a bunch of stuff that we think people want, let's kind of see how it's being used and how we can attract the proper. So I, before I could support any of this, I really feel like I want to see a site plan and line items with what's actually being considered. There are a lot of dedicated and talented people that have provided input into this to get us to this point. But what I heard at that August 1st meeting was that people want to be part of this discussion. They want transparency, they want accountability, and they want, I don't know why we can't talk about these things as we go along in an open meeting at the village board level. We want this to be the people's plaza, and the more visible we can be about our discussions of this and get the information out there, I think everyone wins. That's how we get not one person's vision, or not my vision, but what people want. And so I totally support the idea of not acting on this tonight. I think it would be a slap in the face to the people that came to that meeting and offered and want to be part of this process. Why can't we talk about these things, get the information, get a site plan, and have these discussions at the board level? That's my opinion.
Your Honor, I would amend my second motion to include on number four, it says the committee shall submit a final plan and estimated maintenance costs. I would add also line item cost of the design to answer Mr. Dobbs. And I would add that to number four and amend my motion.
Yes, that's agreed. Mr. Loudermilk, Mr. Brown, any technical reason why we cannot do that? Okay, no, I have no problem with that, Your Honor.
Of the line item cost?
Line item, that's fine.
And do you not want to see that before you vote on the resolution?
No.
If I may jump in with the nature of the issue, I would suggest we at least mark out on a hard copy the ordinance and pass around. If it was something, a 6-0 vote on something not in doubt, I'm okay with not seeing it. I think it's something we could do with a pen and on one of these copies, if you don't mind me writing it in.
Please do.
But I'd like everybody to see what they're voting on. One other point I wanted to hit on, sometimes, we've had questions before on what the board is approving with spending on the plaza in legislative history, like getting things on the record is important. And I wanted to ensure, I didn't write the ordinance, so I want to ensure I read it right and make sure the board understands what they're voting on. If I read this right, the $17,000 can be spent by passing this on design. And anything more than $17,000, any work other than design, has to come back to this board.
That is correct.
Okay.
And there is no blank check, because none of this money can be spent until a complete plan is reviewed by the village board, along with all attendant cost. So all of the things that we've talked about will come back to this board. With respect to representation, I can't think of a project we've had since I've lived in Morton that's had more citizen input than this one, literally hundreds and maybe thousand, at least 1,200 in the survey and another several hundred people who participated otherwise. I understand that from Mr. Stein that it looked up the number of times it was mentioned in the Bureau of Journal Star articles, and something like 117 times in the last two years that the plaza's been discussed. So I think there has been more than adequate transparency. We've literally gone door to door in some cases with downtown area to talk to people about it. I'm comfortable that we are, that this enacts nothing that does not allow the kind of scrutinies that my fellow trustees have asked for, but it does allow something that's critical to letting this happen, and that is creating a funding device and allowing the completion of a design. We can show somebody so we can get money, because nobody's going to write a check for a project that does not exist.
As I was writing, I wanted to ensure, the wording you wanted added was, was it line item budget, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Disseminate that.
Line item budget for the specific features, is I guess how Tom phrased it.
Yeah, each item that they included on the plan.
Yeah.
And that way we can go through it like that.
Perfect.
And Mr. Dobbs, that's when we had the subcommittee, we use that line item feature that you're talking about. When we started looking at the costs, we use that to try to see where we could save and where we thought so. It's a good suggestion.
That makes it that much easier when we look at it, when you decide whether you're going to approve it or not. But like trustee Newhouse said, we're not spending anything. You've got to have a starting point, or you're beating a dead horse talking about a council.
We would potentially be spending another $17,000 in planning without ever having anything get off the ground again. And I can't, I can't see that part of it. We need to set this budget and move forward. And just, you guys keep saying that the $2 million is already spent. I think there's an incredible...
No one said that.
Well, you said, each of you said it's a blank check that's already been writ for $2 million.
No, it's a cap. It's a cap. It's a cap, but we have no idea.
Okay, I'm sorry, you inferred that then that would be spent all the way there. That's what you inferred. What...
Well, that is possible with the way it's written.
That's if we decide to include all of those things that we would want in there, but with the line item information that came back, we could pull, we could very easily pull things out and not spend the $2 million if we so desired. We have to provide a vehicle to get the fundraising off the ground. We have to provide a vehicle to get this in forward motion. One of the things that I took away from that meeting is finally getting forward motion on this. I mean, you can, we can disagree, it's okay. We can talk about these things and disagree about it.
What I heard was different than that.
And I would very confidently say I heard something very different then.
We heard a couple of people, you know, say, let's just do something, but they also, some very reasonable people.
That's not, that's, no, that's not, that's not what I heard. We had a very large amount of input of people that want, that want this plan and put together and to compromise. And we actually have continued to compromise through this whole process. This has not been anywhere at any time, you know, look how many different plans we have actually already provided. Look at how many, how much input has already been provided. At some point, that doesn't mean that whatever we're going to do is actually set in stone. We can actually continue to compromise through this process, but we actually have to put something in place to make this happen so that the people in the community that want to contribute can get that done.
I misunderstood your comment about the $17,000, sorry. I guess I would argue with respect to that, that if we piecemeal it and say, bring this, bring that, it would be far more than $17,000. So this is a carefully estimated cost of what it would take to put this in final configuration and give us a chance to look at it and say, okay, we want more of this or less of that, or put this over here, or take this item out. Since it cannot proceed without that approval, I can't find the liability in it. So again, I think we're entitled to a vote.
Brandy?
Yeah. Can you provide more explanation what's in the $17,000? And the reason I ask that is to date, we've spent a little over $120,000 on engineering design services for the plaza project. I can't help but imagine we've got a wealth of information already established, a base knowledge for that site, that we can't simply come up with the features that have been talked about or proposed and come up with a simple site plan drawing that we can share with the public or we can share for discussion with the board, and I don't see it costing us $17,000.
Well, Mr. Belsley, we have done a careful analysis of the cost. In some cases, there's work that can only be done through professional services. We're taking a plan that was larger than the original space and making it fit in the space that's available. Now, there's some cost, professional cost, even though a number of people, including Mr. Brown, have donated their time and continue to donate their time, there's some professional work involved in here that just simply is unavoidable. We're going to have that cost no matter what we do with the plaza if it's to proceed. So I, to me, that's, that is the best possible outcome under the circumstances. We've got to define costs, and we said, this is how much money you've got to do it. But I don't think we can ask people to do a, to make a professional, accurate assessment if we don't pay for professional services that deliver that. It's got to be more than just the committee looking at it and saying, yeah, I think that'll go here, and I think this will go over there.
And I'm not asking them to donate their services. I guess I'm just suggesting that with over $120,000 of work to date that we have and information gathered, I, I'm looking for something very simplistic. I'm not looking for a full set of designs, spec drawings, and plans, but something that we can consider and review with the board. And I guess I am just asking for what are we seeing in $17,000 worth of drawings?
That's also a not to exceed sum. I don't know that it will cost the whole $17,000, but based on the recommendations from the designers, and I'll ask Mr. Loudermilk to comment. and I'll ask Mr. Lautermilch to comment. But I think that based on what we know, that is a fair amount for the level of professional work that would need to be done to spec the equipment and make the final, make whatever changes we need to make and do the final work. It's a, I agree that we spent some money on it. Some of that expenditure was as a result of the village board sending people back to the drawing board. And so we're going, I think we're going to get this to work. We're going to have to incur some cost, and that's, in my mind, a minimal cost. I don't think anybody likes to spend it, but it's charged against the million. It's not a million plus $17,000. It's a million with here's $17,000 worth of credit. I don't, Mr. Lautermilch, do you have any comment on it from an engineering standpoint?
Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest thing is the site was scaled down. I'm not speaking for or against here, but the site was scaled down. So just speaking in terms of dollars, the site was scaled down tremendously from the discussions, from the meeting. And I think, you know, I think the intent from Bruce was that he would keep something similar to the concept that was brought months ago and scale it down into that space, but there's still a lot of engineering that's going to go into that. And then the presentation to the board, again, multiple presentations to get, you know, we know there's going to be some back and forth again. You know, I think Farnsworth worked really hard to keep those costs down. But we're somewhat starting fresh again with a smaller site. So I think the fees are within range. I know there's a few extra thousand in there for some engineering to deal with some of the utilities on the site due to the changes that were made to reduce costs, which you take out Phil and all those things. So just in terms of the cost there, I mean, I think it is a reasonable cost that Farnsworth took a really hard look at, knowing that this is a difficult thing to come back for more money. But we are going back to the drawing board again.
And it's possible that we will have a reduction in the total cost anyway. So I think that, you know, if we have a modest expenditure in order to do something that might net us a substantial decrease and still deliver what we want in terms of features and quality, that's a pretty acceptable trade-off. And again, I would argue that there's, you know, there's no blank check. We still have full control, nothing can happen unless and until the private fundraising takes place and the village board passes judgment on the plan and the maintenance cost. So I, and I think that there's plenty of opportunity for transparency. I think that there's been an extensive effort to create transparency, and there's no loss of that in passing this plan.
Working with Farnsworth, I've always found them reasonable. I think it's a reasonable amount not to succeed. But I think this board has also done some due diligence. This would have came up for a vote for $2.5 million plaza probably around March. Because when I told Norm I was wanting maybe to look at reducing it, you know, he says, "Well, your trustees, if you've got the votes." Because I really think we saved a half million off that original design. So if we have to spend a few bucks to come up with the design that the citizens said, that's all fair, it's honest. We're not going to spend $2.5 million on this site. I find it hard to believe we're going to spend two for as small as it is. So I think we look at the design, it comes back to the board, we vote each feature up and down. But I think we need, after this discussion, I think we have to get the vehicle and get the fundraising started.
Am I correct in my understanding, again, of the intent that approving this would not preclude the board from later deciding to only appropriate a lesser sum if, when the plans come in, based on the features, the board only wants to spend $800,000? I understand, right, by the intent of vote tonight, that if that's what the plan they approved calls for, this ordinance wouldn't preclude that decision by the board?
I would say that's true. It's a not to exceed amount. So what we're saying is we'll spend up to a million, and if there's a substantial reduction or substantial public fundraising, then it seems to me that it's the rational thing to do to have the difference built into the village portion of the obligation.
I ask it just to ensure that when the plans come back, there isn't a question as to whether you've already committed this money and have to spend it, but to emphasize the fact that you decided.
We have final approval of the plan. So again, no expenditure unless and until all of these conditions are met.
And I try not to interject at these points, but we've had questions before over what you're approving spending and whatnot. And I'd rather speak now than have a discussion when the plan comes up and wonder what we intend to vote.
Your opinion is always welcome, Counselor.
Your Honor, I did have one other, one other comment, please. The other thing I was going to mention, as it's been read in the ordinance, the paragraph number four talks about "The downtown development committee shall submit a final plan and estimated maintenance cost to the Board of Trustees for approval." The Downtown Development Committee is not an official committee or sanctioned by the village board. It's an EDC committee, and this is the group that originally proposed and brought forward the $2.5 million plan. It's, they're meetings, to my knowledge, and I've looked for them. The meetings are not public. If they are, I apologize, I'm not aware of it. I could not find where that was the case. And I don't see where the meetings are published as well. And I don't think that's a good process here in place for us to follow through with it. We're literally turning this project back to the same group that isn't accountable with their meetings and openness in that sense. So all we're going to see as a board is the finished product on this. But I think it's just not an open and transparent process for the public to participate or have input on along the way until we get to that final product. So I hate to see that in there as well. And I guess, can you explain, Trustee Newhouse, how that came about? And is there another vehicle, another group? And the mayor previously suggested that, isn't this not something that us as trustees can be taken on and treated as a committee of the whole and consider this process and discuss it openly and transparently with the public instead of, again, turning it over to this group?
I will answer your last question first. I don't think there's a chance in the world that a bunch of representatives and acting in a political capacity can be a group of designers. And I'm not even sure that that's an attractive governmental idea. We sit around and argue about putting a bench here or a tree over there. The committee was in fact authorized by the village board, at least in a de facto sense. The names were submitted publicly. All of the work of the committee has been presented step by step to the village board and approved in each step. It's easily documentable. The committee is as broadly representative of Morton citizens as any Morton committee I can think of. It includes people like, well, matter of fact, my colleague, Mrs. Herman, sits on the Downtown Development Committee. Mr. Lautermilch is there. Mrs. Piles is there as a representative of the village. People like Steve Oprley, Mary Spar, who's a downtown business owner. Teresa Blugnay, who was a Morton citizen who came and volunteered to participate. And no Morton citizen who's ever been interested in serving on that or any other committee, whether it's under the EDC or anywhere else that I know of, has been turned down. We usually need more help rather than less. So there's, in my mind, there's nothing exclusive about this committee. And even if they were, there were, it's representing the interests of the community, and we have final authority over the design anyway. So as long as we get a good design and we've got professional people on the committee like Mr. Brown, Jeff Keach, Jim Roker, hugely competent people who have the interest in the community in mind, I'm not sure why there would be an issue over where the committee is housed. And the committee could just as well report to anybody else. It was the agreement when the Economic Development Council was founded on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I believe, prior to your election, Mr. Belsley, that the two organizations would work in a complementary fashion with the village board always having the final authority. And so there was consensus, I think, at the time that this committee would proceed. And I would regret it if I thought anybody felt that there's a lack of transparency or lack of access. But there's been no exception that I know of of anybody who wanted to know what was going on or participate or have a report, in fact, bent over backwards to put that material out in the community through the newspaper, online, and through other media, pumpkin festival displays. So I guess I would argue that I think that's a, again, so we have final design control authority over it, nothing gets done without our approval. I feel that that's a non-issue.
So if I understand you correctly, there, the group is open to any citizens coming forward that want to participate in this exercise?
Any constructive person who wants to participate applies.
Would they see the chairman, Jennifer Daley? Or who would they talk to?
You mean Adam to the committee?
Yeah.
He's asking if you're going to add him.
I think anybody who wants to apply, I think, could come to, could come to me, could go to Mrs. Daley. The members are confirmed by pro forma by the Board of Directors of the Economic Development Council. But nobody who brings a helping hand and a constructive attitude would be excluded.
Very good.
Question for Counsel, possibly. Since this is a de facto committee, could we publish those meetings and have them be open meetings that people could attend?
If it is an official committee of the board, officially designated as such, you're required to do so.
Right.
The interesting issue with this, direct answer to your question is yes. If you chose to publish it, you could. I don't believe, with my understanding of where the committee is now, that it is an official committee of the board, which would mean I don't believe you have to publish it, take minutes, give notice.
That's correct.
But that would not preclude you from being able to do so. So I would suggest, direct answer to your question is yes, you could publish it, post on the board's website and publicize it in the same way you currently publish your meetings. I don't believe you have to, but you certainly could.
I think that decision would be, it is housed in the Economic, it is an Economic Development Council committee, even though it's, you know, with the consensus of the board, that is a private organization. So I think the decision to make it public would be, would require their concurrence. But as I said, no citizen who wanted to constructively participate would be turned away, and we certainly sought participation by all kinds of folks. So I, again, I think that the process, which puts every step in front of the village board in a televised meeting and is reported extensively in the newspaper, deals adequately with the question of whether or not the community's interest is represented. I've heard some interesting arguments tonight. And I have to tell you, as I look at this ordinance, to me, it just says, "We want $2 million, you're going to have to pass it to see what's in it." And I've heard that before. But I can almost live with that. But what really gets to me is, and I think Trustee Herman hit on it, was the fact that we had such good input from the citizens. And then, at the end of this, we say, "We're going to turn this over to the EDC to do the planning and design." And the EDC spoke very eloquently at the public hearing, but they spoke very much for one side. "We want this, we want all of this." And then another group said, "Not so much, maybe we should reduce it." And our reaction to that public meeting is to go ahead with this right now. Well, I can live with that. But to go ahead and say, "And by the way, we're giving it back to the EDC, and the EDC will be doing the plan." And I know we get to approve it, but it just seems to me, you know, we've got people on this Board of Trustees who have managed much larger projects than this. We've got, our own staff has the capability to do this. And to turn it over to the EDC, which isn't even, well, it's recognized, but it's not an official part of our organization, I simply don't understand it. I don't even understand why the Business District Committee has been sort of dealt out of this, which was an official commission. Has not, Your Honor. So my point, I'll recognize you in a minute. My point is, okay, go ahead and approve this, and I guess we'll find out what it's about. But I don't understand why we would let the EDC take over the design and planning. There are a lot of other ways to do this. Sorry. Business District Representatives sit on the committee, Your Honor. They've not been excluded in any way. In any case, we have a proposal on the table. I'd like to vote, Your Honor, what citizens deserve to either have a yes or a no. I think everyone has probably had their say. Call it.
May I recap it first?
Yeah, you probably should with this addition particularly.
I don't think you need to.
I wrote it down, what you did. Counselor wrote. Ordinance number 1311 was, my motion was made by Trustee Newhouse, seconded by Trustee Kaufman, to include an amendment to paragraph four, so that paragraph four reads as follows. "The Downtown Development Committee shall submit a final plan and a line item budget and estimated maintenance costs to the Board of Trustees for approval. If the plan is not approved, the authorization of the expenditure of $1 million will be revoked." And that is the amendment to paragraph four. Ready for a vote?
Yes.
Dobbs?
Well, due to the fact that the site's finally been established, the streets kept open, we're not buying any more property, we need a starting point to move forward rather than spin our wheels. So I will vote yes.
Herr?
Yes.
Herman?
No.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Newhouse?
Yes.
Belsley?
No.
The vote is four to two. In favor of?
We're going to have to move to closed session. Can I have a motion to do that? Do I need a motion?
Yes.
I always get confused.
Second?
Do we need to call a roll? Yes, we do.
Call it.
Herr?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Newhouse?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Dobbs?
No staff will be required for this meeting and no decisions will be made after. So if everybody wants to go home, then can.